Thank you. We have two motions coming out of closed session. Dr. Acuff, would you like to start us off?
I'm going to move that we accept this resolution to be sent over to the Board of Supervisors, and I will now read it. It's a resolution requesting reaffirmation of property transfer to the School Board of Albemarle County, Virginia, and approval of its use as an elementary school. Whereas on December 22nd, 2000, Albemarle County purchased three parcels of land located at 133 Galaxy Farm Lane, 167 Galaxy Farm Lane, and 1506 Scottsville Road. And whereas on November 13th, 2019, the School Board of Albemarle County, Virginia, adopted a resolution requesting that the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors transfer that parcel located at 133 Galaxy Farm Lane by deed to the School Board for the purpose of constructing a high school center on the property. And whereas on December 18th, 2019, the Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution approving the transfer of the property to the School Board for such purpose. And whereas the county conveyed the property to the School Board by deed dated December 19th, 2019, and recorded on December 20th, 2019. Whereas the School Board has subsequently determined that the best use of the property is a new elementary school rather than as a high school center as previously planned. And whereas the School Board seeks the support of the Board of Supervisors for the construction of the elementary school on the property. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Albemarle County, Virginia, that the School Board hereby request that the Board of Supervisors reaffirm the prior conveyance of the property and approve its use as an elementary school, and that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So it passes, and that will go to the Board of Supervisors. Next up will be Ms. Osborne.
I move that the School Board of Albemarle County, Virginia, direct Albemarle County Public Schools staff to determine the feasibility of locating, designing, and constructing Center Two on Property A and applying the funds already appropriated for such purpose to this project.
Second. That one we'll give to Dr. Acuff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I didn't allow time for discussion after the second. Do you have anything you would like to add, Mr. Page, or just?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Maybe it's something you today.
Sounds great. Yep. Ms. Lee will be leaving our meeting. Did you want to provide the reason, or you just want to?
Oh, I'm just ill, but I just wanted to say hello. My apologies to all the families who've come out tonight and staff, but I am febrile and I'm heading home.
Sounds good.
Get back.
Thank you.
So that will bring us to a roll call. Mr. Holden, if we could start on your end.
Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall.
Kaye Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Jono Alcarro, At Large.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Graham Page, Samuel Muller District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Sunuthi Amrasingh, Student Rep.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Christine Thompson, Clerk to the Board.
Awesome.
Sunuthi Thompson.
Now if we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republicans for which this stands, one nation, under God, made invisible with liberty and justice for all.
We will now observe a brief moment of silence. And next up will be approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda passes. Next up will be approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Dr. Berlin, seconds. Do we have any discussion, any items to pool? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? After that will be announcements, and I will be doing the announcements today. It is Month of the Military Child, and we have a lot of people in our audience to celebrate. So I will read this. Whereas in 1986, our nation's Secretary of Defense, Casper Weinberger, designated April as the month of the military child to honor the children of military families and to recognize the many sacrifices and challenges these children overcome. And whereas these sacrifices and challenges can include extended deployments of parents to combat zones, frequent moves and constant readjustments, including, as an article in The New York Times has pointed out, frequent transitions from one school division to another. And whereas by the time most military children have completed high school, they will have switched school divisions as many as nine times. And whereas a Military Times survey of active-duty soldiers has found a direct link between the education experiences of their children and their decision to remain in public service. And whereas President Biden, in a proclamation, said of military children, "Many of these young patriots uproot their lives every few years while often celebrating birthdays and holidays with an empty seat at the table." And whereas our region is home to such vitally important military resources as Ravanna Station, which includes the National Ground Intelligence Center, and the Judge Advocate General's Legal Center and School at the University of Virginia. And whereas Albemarle County Public Schools is privileged to count among our school community nearly 500 students who enrich learning for all by contributing their diversity, sharing their life experiences, offering their strength of character, displaying resilience, and building friendships. And whereas our military families are invested in the well-being and success of the communities in which they live through such roles as mentoring, tutoring, coaching, parent-teacher organization membership, and as school-based volunteers. And whereas Albemarle County Public Schools has been a beneficiary of these extraordinary contributions, now therefore be it resolved that the Albemarle County School Board salutes our military families for their valued service to our schools, communities, and to our nation, and that we pledge our continued support to you, and that we are both proud and grateful to reinforce a message first expressed more than 100 years ago, on a different occasion to a different audience than this year, but we want you. And I, before, this isn't about me, but I just have to say, I'm a little teary-eyed. I am a born-and-bred military brat. I attended over 13 different schools. I have devoted myself to public service. Still carry around my Go Army chain, so I just am so happy to see you here and so happy that we're celebrating all that you guys do for our country, so thank you. Stand up, stand up.
You need a second.
So, real quick, do we have a second on that resolution?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? So approved. So normally, typically, we have a few people come up, and if there's questions, do we want, would any of you, is that the plan tonight, or are there any plans? Would you, anybody like to circle through and do handshakes and get a photo? Because that's also, let's do that. You don't have to come up if you don't want to, but if you want to.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for going to us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Are you in school?
Thank you.
What school do you go to?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Love the shirt. That's what my dad's shirt used to be, although also the brown.
That's my dad. I wear that.
Yes, yes.
I wear that.
Love your T-shirt.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Hi, do you go to school? What school do you go to?
Yep, I do same thing.
You do? Outstanding. That's where you're learning how to be so smart. How about you?
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Outstanding.
Yes, always.
How many? Sounds good.
That's a good place. I love your pencil.
Hold your hands up. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Did you get a picture?
I did get a picture of Kate. So military people get the memo. They're like, I got things to do. But I would usually have to say, you're welcome to go now. You don't want to stick around for the rest. Well, I'm glad we did that, because that pretty much just made my day. There's a lot of cute kids. Awesome. Okay, so that concludes our announcements. Next up will be School Board Superintendent Business. Does anybody have any business they would like to announce? I think Dr. Haas had something.
Oh, I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Page and also Mountain View Elementary School. We went out and visited the school on Monday, had a great time walking to school, visiting classrooms, a lot of great things going on. I also do want to give a shout out to Ms. Osborne, just a calendar snafu. It was originally Stone Robinson, and she went to Stone Robinson.
And I had a great visit with Mr. Foreman.
I'm sure all kinds of great things happened we'll never know about.
I know, man. It was, you know, since I was unexpected, and he just really just rolled with the flow. It was great.
Awesome. I think we also have, next up, a motion about Earth Day. Oh, no, sorry.
Not a motion. I was just going to share.
Oh, great.
Dr. Berlin, I apologize with our internet issues we're having with.
That is okay. I sent some fun pictures, also the round. So I had the opportunity to go to Croze Elementary School today, and they were celebrating Earth Day, and there is a partnership with the Master Gardeners of the county who have gardens at Greer, at Croze, and at Stone Robinson. And so today they were at Croze, and so a huge call out to Tish Moore, who walked me around, and to the gardeners who spent the whole morning from 8:00 to 12:00 with the second graders and the second-grade teachers, planting native plants and teaching them about native plants. And so if you haven't gone out to Croze and looked at the garden lately, it is beautiful. There's also some discovery boxes that one of the volunteers built, where you can go and actually touch snake skins and birds' nests, so really making it a great, open learning, back-to-nature place for all the children to enjoy. And then an extra call out to Barbara Honeycutt, one of the second-grade teachers, who spends a lot of time on her own, really supporting the garden and all the work around it. So beautiful time at Croze and a beautiful morning.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that update, Dr. Berlin. Next up will be public comment, and all of the School Board members have graciously volunteered to run that today. I guess I will choose Ellen.
Right.
We have no speakers tonight. There you go. That gets us right into the meat of the agenda. We're moving to our work session. First up will be adopting the 2023-2024 School Operating Fund and Special Revenue Funds Budget.
What about the resolution? Teacher appreciation.
Pause one second. There was an additional resolution that Mr. Page is going to read.
Okay. This is Teacher Recognition Week. Whereas 70 years ago, our nation first set aside a day of recognition of teachers, following a public campaign led by former First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt. And whereas in 1980, the first full week in May officially became a national time of celebration of the contribution teachers make to the lives of students, families, and communities across our nation and world. And whereas this year, the first full school week in May is from May 8th through the 12th. And whereas President Biden noted in a proclamation, "I will never forget the educators who encouraged me as a child, who instilled confidence in us, who encouraged us to dream boldly, and who helped us believe we would achieve anything." And whereas teaching has been correctly described as the one profession that makes all other professions possible. And whereas educators across our nation have encouraged, inspired, and equipped countless millions of young people to become not only presidents of the United States, but to become the healers, inventors, producers, builders, employers, protectors, artists, public servants, and the moms and dads that ever propel families and communities forward. And whereas here in Albemarle County, it can be said that not all superheroes wear capes, but they do have teaching degrees. And whereas these educators selflessly devote their support and service to their students unbound by the restrictions of the hours of their day, the days of a week, or the weeks of a year. And whereas the imagination, enthusiasm, brilliance, compassion, and sense of purpose that our educators bring into the classroom and into the homes of students and families, a simile without limit. And whereas the fulfillment of our vision, that all learners are engaged in authentic, challenging, and relevant learning experiences, and that all become lifelong contributors and leaders in our dynamic and diverse society, is achieved through the eagerness for the engagement in and the joy for learning created in classrooms across our county. And whereas every day in our classroom, our educators bring to life the words of our nation's first teacher in space, Krista McAuliffe, who spoke for all in her profession when she assured us that "I touch the future. I teach." Now therefore be it resolved that the Albemarle County School Board hereby urges students, families, businesses, organizations, and all other community members to join the board in expressing deep gratitude for and recognition of our teachers on the occasion of National Teacher Appreciation Week.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair here.
Yeah. Awesome. Well, I'm glad that we came back for that one. Thank you.
Chair Carlson, in other business, can I just one thing squeeze in? I just want to let everybody know on May 6th, here in Lane Auditorium, it is, I don't know what annual, but it's the annual our community salutes for high school enlistees in the military. It's going to be at 10 o'clock, Saturday, the 6th, right here.
Awesome. So then that gets us to the School Operating Fund and Special Revenue Fund.
I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning, and this evening I'm here just for a couple minutes to facilitate the adoption of the FY24 budget. So you've seen this budget process many times. We started in February with the presentation of the draft funding request, and today we're at the last step to adopt the FY24 budget. Next week, the Board of Supervisors is scheduled to approve and appropriate the FY24 transfer and our budget as well. This is our strategic planning slide. The FY24 budget, as recommended, does align with our strategic plan and our mission to work together as a team. We will end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. We seek to build relationships with families and communities to ensure that every student succeeds. Now, as you've seen throughout the budget process, all of our new proposals and the pieces of our budget align with the three goals as shown in the bottom right of the slide. This slide is a review of what was presented to you two weeks ago. This is a summary of the changes that have been implemented since you all adopted the funding request in March. So the FY24 budget recommendation for both the school fund and the special revenue funds is what we're recommending that you approve this evening. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you all to take action. Thank you.
Does the chair traditionally make the motion for this, or is this someone? I can't remember.
It can be anyone.
Anyone. Would somebody like to make the motion to approve the budget?
Sure. I move to adopt the fiscal year 2023-24 School Board Budget of $259,922,224 for the school fund, and $30,316,988 for special revenue funds.
Second. Dr. Acuff, seconds. Is there any discussion? I guess I will just add, thank you for all the hard work that you put into this. I know it's a long time, so this is a good day for our school division, and we are so appreciative of everything that you've done to lead us along the way and get us to this point. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Can we do a roll call vote for the budget?
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Lee is absent. Chair Carlson?
Yes.
So moved.
Hey.
Thank you, Maya.
That's a lot of money. I just feel like it's a bigger deal than just like quietly sitting down. It's like, good job! Okay, so that brings us to our work, part one of our work session, which is going to be a presentation on professional development. We have a lot of professionals joining us to share about this, and I will note that this was a suggestion of Dr. Berlin, so thank you for the suggestion of having this work topic.
Sorry, I can't find the mouse. Can you guys see the presentation on your screens? Are we ready? All right. Good evening. I am Megan Wood, Director of Professional Development. Before we get into the presentation tonight, I want to share with you some of the learning and reflection I experienced in the process of preparing for tonight. As some of you know, I've worked in the division as a classroom teacher, instructional coach, building-level principal, and now I serve in this role. These roles have provided me the opportunity to move in and out of professional learning that is provided to staff in a variety of ways. Creating this presentation was a reminder that our professional development model is a nonlinear cyclical web of support. It encourages personal and professional growth that respects the autonomy of the learner and provides many entry points into learning. So I want to thank you all for this opportunity, because it has provided me a chance to deepen my understanding, as I hope my presentation will do for you tonight. The format of tonight's meeting will include a whole group presentation regarding the best practices of effective professional development and highlights of professional development opportunities in Albemarle County. After the short whole-group presentation, there will be a 10-minute break and transition into small-group sessions. Following the small-group session, we will reconvene in the auditorium to close out the presentation with a whole-group debrief and discussion. Before we leave tonight, we will know best practices in providing effective professional development, examples of professional development opportunities offered by Albemarle County. We will understand that change in teacher practice is a result of ongoing collaborative learning experiences focused on the needs of the learner, and that professional learning is a complex process in which adult learners should have autonomy and choice to pursue personal areas of growth. We will be able to articulate ways in which ACPS supports teacher learning resulting in student achievement, and be able to discuss the pros and cons of ACPS's approach to professional As we get started, you should see two separate materials at your table. One is a resource packet for your small breakout sessions, and the other is a reflection guide. On the reflection guide, I would like for you to take two minutes to journal a short response to the prompt. Think for a moment of a time when you engaged in professional learning experience that changed your practice. What did the professional learning look like, feel like, sound like? And what did you need for the learning to take hold?
I am going to need that again, because I was finding my piece of paper. The prompt. Oh, you were reading this. I got you. I have that in the paper.
And I'm going to ask, as you just move through the rest of the night, that you listen for areas of overlap between what you remember about that learning experience and what you hear tonight in terms of themes. All right? Originally, Dr. Isabel Sawyer, a local expert in professional development who co-authored the book Professional Development Redefined, was going to be here tonight to present to you all regarding best practices in professional development. Unfortunately, she is now unable to attend. However, she graciously agreed to record her presentation for us, so please listen to her as she describes what professional learning should be.
Good evening. Professional learning should be a lot of things, but I'm going to share with you four of the big elements that Laura Desimone, a researcher out of the University of Delaware, shares with us about effective professional learning. Desimone shares that effective professional learning should be coherent, collaborative, of sufficient duration, and active. So I'll talk a little bit about each one of those elements in the next few slides. Professional learning should be coherent. This is really a learning experience that is clearly aligned to a teacher's day-to-day work, that matches the state goals, the district goals, and the school initiatives and goals, so that the learning that teachers are engaged in is connected. It is often connected to my own professional goals as well as a teacher's. So my professional goals, the initiatives that my building is focused on, the initiatives that my district is focused on, and the state should all be closely aligned and clearly connected. Again, professional learning should be coherently, and it can be coherently embedded into the day-to-day culture of schools, districts, and the larger system, so it really should be job embedded. It should match whatever teachers are engaging in in their day-to-day work with students. Powerful, effective professional learning has an element of collaboration in it always. Collaboration, really that opportunity to work together with the teacher who teaches next door to my classroom, with my fourth-grade-level team, my vertical school, you know, all teachers at all grade levels, or even district-wide endeavors that are focused on specific topics, giving teachers the opportunity... Giving teachers the opportunity to connect with one another, learn from one another, that, that has all been shown to support teachers' learning and student achievement. Student achievement, the ultimate goal of professional learning, right? Collaborative learning, the other thing that collaborative learning really does do, we have a paradigm, a traditional paradigm of isolationism that happens in schools. It's been that way throughout decades. Teachers go into their classrooms, they shut their door, and they teach their lessons. So breaking through that isolationism, giving teachers the opportunity to learn with and from one another, is very important to changing practice and hence impacting student achievement. So collaborative learning also offers that opportunity. Teacher learning should be of sufficient duration. We know that the one-and-done rarely works. We don't know exactly, the research doesn't tell us exactly how long professional learning should, should last, but we know it must be ongoing. You must have opportunities to learn, go teach a little bit and practice, and then come back and learn some more. So really, just in time, professional learning based upon the content or the strategy that they're working on in their classroom. And finally, professional learning should really be active. It should, and I think this is the most important little bullet at the bottom, mirror the student experience. So the opportunities that teachers have to learn should be very similar to the opportunities for learning that they are planning for their own students. They should have choice. They should be able to plan their own learning paths, make decisions about what they need to learn to get better at their craft, and then, and then fulfill that learning that they feel like they need. It should be self-directed and build, build from their own personal experience. So what they're teaching, what they learned last year, a really clear build for themselves. Again, it should be not passive, not sit and get. The opportunity to, to work with others, to learn and to create, create resources. One of the things Richard Elmore says is that learning to do the right thing in the setting in which you work is critical. So really giving teachers that chance to do, to learn and do exactly what they need to do within their own setting and their own, their own personal needs. So we'd be remiss if we talked about professional learning without also talking about the power of implementation. So implementation, this is a quote from Michael Fulon, he says that implementation is professional learning. So giving teachers the chance to teach with robust curriculum resources helps them actually learn just from teaching, just by teaching. We know that there are lots of things that are important to learning within the content, but professional learning that is linked to curricular resources is, is impactful. Those two combined are super important. And that if we separate what we teach from how we teach, that often undermines the effectiveness of both. They need to be connected. So truly, adopting a high-quality resource that offers educative experiences embedded within the curriculum really helps change practices for teachers when that's also combined with thoughtful professional learning about the resource, the content, and the pedagogy. And I'd like to close by sharing with you an infographic that really helps you see the, the power of professional learning within a larger context, really surrounding teachers with a system of support, which is so critical to teacher growth. As you can see in the center of this infographic, the teacher and student relationship is at the core. And ultimately, that's what we want, is to increase student achievement. So the opportunity for the teacher to influence student achievement, change their practice so that they can become better at their craft, and support students at becoming more effective learners is, is the ultimate goal for all of, all of this professional learning work. Around that center, this, this graphic comes to us from Learning Forward. They did a lot of thinking around it. And around that graphic, you can see the resources that impact this professional learning relationship. Educative curriculums are resources that help teachers learn just through teaching. Standards, so standards not only for students, instructional standards, college and career-ready standards, but also professional learning standards. So things that teachers need to get better at. And then finally, the opportunity for collaboration with others. So professional learning communities, which most schools and districts have built into their work, and opportunities to work with a principal or instructional coach, right? The opportunity to collaborate and learn from a more knowledgeable other is critical. And you can see around this center, all of that learning is supported by the district, by the region, and by the state through lots of different ways, right? Providing focus and direction, making sure that teachers have the chance to connect with other educators, providing resources for instruction and for learning. And then even to the point of relicensor and some of the opportunities that teachers have throughout the state, the state of Virginia, other states to become licensed and qualified teachers as part of this whole professional growth piece.
Oh, I plugged it again.
Good evening.
Sorry. There we go. Before moving into how ACPS supports teacher professional development in your resource guide, you will find a more detailed description of the last graphic Dr. Sawyer highlighted in her presentation for your reference. Additionally, we have ordered copies of her book for each of you, and they are on their way. I will make sure that you get them as soon as they arrive. In this next section of the presentation, I'm going to first share with you examples of how professional development opportunities that ACPS offered. Oh, sorry. I'm going to first share with you examples of professional development opportunities that ACPS offers, and then discuss how our guiding principles are related to the four key areas highlighted by Dr. Sawyer. Then I will transition us into small group breakout sessions. The work of the Office of Professional Development aligns with our vision, mission, and strategic goals in that our role is to support educators in expanding and improving their knowledge and skills to ensure that they are using the most current and best practices to support student achievement. Our work aligns to all three goals of the strategic plan by focusing on supporting teachers' ability to support each student to achieve their best, foster culturally responsive environments, and support social, emotional well-being. Additionally, we partner with the Human Resource Department to attract, develop, and retain the highest quality of staff. Page E22 of the budget book lists five goals of the Office of Professional Development. For tonight's presentation, I am going to focus on the three main goals as they most specifically relate to supporting professional learning for staff by aligning to division initiatives, focusing on high-yield strategies to support students, and maintaining and expanding format options. The next three slides fully articulate each goal and provide highlights throughout the year of ways in which we have offered experiences that support each goal. For the sake of time, I'm only going to speak to one item on each slide. However, if you have questions about any of the content I present, please write them down on your reflection guide in the question catcher section. If at the end of the night, after small group breakout sessions are over, those questions haven't been answered, we will have time to address them during our debrief. One way in which we support division-level initiatives is to provide opportunity courses. Opportunity courses are professional learning experiences that we have offered throughout the school year and over the summer for teachers and staff. These courses deepen participants' understanding of best practices related to specific areas of interest. Examples of these experiences include responsive classroom, the science of reading, mental health first aid, a variety of book studies. This year, we have offered 73 unique courses with a total of 3,655 registrants for the courses. I would like to highlight Making Connections is a way to demonstrate how we work to achieve Goal Two. Making Connections is an annual conference that we host every year that includes both internal and external presenters. This year, the conference was expanded to include both instructional and support staff. We hosted over 150 different courses with 320 sessions. Most people might consider Making Connections a one-time event. However, it serves multiple purposes. Utilizing teacher presenters to share practices that are working in their classroom allows for colleagues to build relationships and connections within the division to learn from one another. Offering sessions as a continuation of ongoing learning related to division initiatives provides space for teachers to deepen their understanding of practices related to differentiation, curriculum implementation, culturally responsive teaching, social, emotional learning, and instructional best practices. Providing teacher choice and presentation attendance creates opportunities to ignite teachers' learning in new directions to pursue within coaching experiences provided in ACPS. To support Goal Number Three, we have partnered with various universities to create cohorts to support additional endorsement and licensure opportunities. We have continued our longstanding partnership with JMU to support teachers interested in pursuing either a master's or endorsement in school leadership. We currently have 12 employees completing the program this semester and 11 continuing next semester. This year, we have added a VCU reading cohort to support the Virginia Literacy Act requirements that will go into effect in the '24-'25 school year. We anticipate that we will have about 30 staff participating in this cohort starting this fall. Additionally, we are partnering with the Office of Human Resources to develop a similar cohort for special education endorsements. These cohorts offer tuition discounts from the university partners based on the number of staff we bring, and we supplement tuition with professional development reimbursement funds. As I was listening to Dr. Sawyer's presentation, this quote resonated with me. "We can offer a variety of professional learning opportunities, but if they don't translate to improving student practice to support student outcomes, these opportunities fall short." So I want to take a minute to share with you what our typical framework for program implementation looks like. Support for professional learning is provided at all three levels in the organization, the district, the school, and the grade or individual level. These levels should work in concert together to provide support for professional growth. For example, in the implementation of responsive classroom, the division hosts several opportunities throughout the summer for staff to engage in a four-day intensive course to learn about the philosophy and strategies to create a positive learning environment. Throughout the school year, the Office of Professional Development helps coordinate school-based walkthroughs with an expert to provide feedback on the implementation. The building-level administrator receives this feedback and works to provide building-level professional learning to support recommended program changes. In conjunction with this work, teachers work collaboratively in professional learning communities to share successes and analyze their practice. Throughout this process, all three levels engage in reflective conversations with one another to ensure additional professional, professional learning opportunities support the next steps of implementation. Hopefully, within the framework and the examples I've shared with you tonight, you have heard elements of the five guiding principles of ACS, ACPS's professional development. These principles either directly overlap or are the same components that Dr. Sawyer mentioned in her presentation. For example, the principle of job-embedded professional development relates both to the concept of coherence and sufficient duration because it represents being sustained over time and anchored in the work. Additionally, self-directed learning relates to the concept of active learning because it engages the learner in providing autonomy to pursue areas of interest and growth as it relates to professional practice. Working side-by-side with teachers in the areas of curriculum assessment, instruction, culturally responsiveness, and technology integration is one of the most significant ways we support these guiding principles because the act of coaching encompasses all of the principles. The remainder of the evening, you will spend time in small breakout sessions unpacking the ways in which coaching in these areas support teacher development. The purpose of the stations is to provide an opportunity to unpack the scope, depth, and impact on teacher practice, and the intersections of these three groups to directly support professional learning within Amaro County schools. We know that these groups also serve other roles of support throughout the division, but for tonight's purposes, we are focusing on direct teacher support. At this time, we'll take a 10-minute break. And then after the break, if you can report directly to your small breakout room, I will add the break, the session break times into the slide deck so that we can stay on time. I've got the rotations on the slide here. I think I might have put the wrong room, room number though. Ms. Thompson is?
Two forty-six.
It's two forty-six. Okay, so I'll also fix that typo. So it'll be, we'll be in room 320, two forty-six, and the auditorium. The presenters will rotate to you all, so you guys can stay in your location. And then they'll rotate, and they have a timekeeper to keep us on track. And we'll see you all back here after the rotations.
Great. So for those in the audience, although I don't see many people who don't know the drill, but you are welcome to join us in the various breakout rooms if you want to follow along with any of the sessions. And we will see you there at 7:26.
Thank you. Some of the work that I do for the group. Thanks, Kenny. So you'll hear about some of that project management and the professional development that comes out of that, but I also manage the ACPS at-home Internet access program for the county.
We do have a few teachers and LTI's with us tonight. We'll let them introduce themselves in just a moment when we bring them up. So, what is an LTI? A learning technology integrator is what the acronym stands for. How do they support professional development in ACPS? LTI's are responsible for supporting the implementation of all ACPS learning technology resources and systems in a way which is instructionally sound and leverages these technologies to yield improved learning outcomes. Essentially, LTI's provide division, building, and job-embedded support with implementing technology in the classroom. LTI is a very specialized role. It takes an individual with the technical skills of an engineer and is intersected with the pedagogical heart of an educator to be a successful LTI. More generally, we are a team of fourteen licensed educators with previous classroom experience, myself and our project manager, Kelsey. We have a diverse set of skills, but we all have strong technology skills. We are organized under the Department of Technology. This ensures that we are having educationally sound decisions made within that department that are in touch with what's actually going on in buildings. We're school-based, but we do collaborate and plan as a unified team in support of various initiatives. We bridge the gap between instruction and technology in support of staff learning and student growth. Why are we here? We support PD around purposeful, healthy technology integration across the division, school, and individual staff level in a job-embedded way. We support strong digital citizenship practices in school and at home, which we've spoken about before. We also support the Department of Education's technology integration standards that are less familiar to many staff and fill the VDOE standards of quality for the ITRT role. And we support other division technology projects essential to division and school operations and in support of communities at large. This is how we're organized. We're site-based across each of our school buildings with assignments based on several factors, including student population size, demographics, teacher and administrator need, and the unique skill sets that each of our LTI's bring. We tailor that to our schools and their needs. Our team is supported by me and the role of Assistant Director, setting vision and working with personnel, and Kelsey as Manager for Digital Equity overseeing all of our project work. The names before you represent a group of passionate, dynamic educators who believe in the power of technology when implemented well to support differentiated, engaging instruction which supports all students. The visual in front of you represents a framework for the tiers of support provided by the LTI program. The day-to-day work of an LTI varies widely but can be organized into three primary tiers. Division initiatives align with a strategic plan, many of which the school board has tasked our team with direct implementation of. Principal partnerships, in which the LTI supports school administration with school-specific PD and day-to-day technology logistics. And finally, job-embedded coaching support where LTI's work directly with teachers to grow their capacity in the areas of purposeful, healthy, and meaningful technology integration. Much of the work that the LTI does supports various projects in our division, but is the professional development for teachers that comprises the largest part of our responsibilities and crosses into each of these three tiers. Tonight, as we go through this presentation, I encourage you to follow the purple over the first few slides to understand how PD intersects with our framework. The role of PD across these tiers can also be understood as flowing directly from the ACPS mission and strategic plan and trickling down into every aspect of what an LTI does. In order to ensure that learning technology initiatives are implemented in alignment with the ACPS mission, learning technology is embedded at every single tier of support. Each tier of support flows from the ACPS vision and are aligned with one another. All right. Kelsey's going to share about our division-level support.
So our first tier is the Tier One Division Initiatives. Largely, this is just project work around new initiatives, new technology coming into the classroom. So naturally, most of these require some training and professional development for staff. Our team helps to provide this, and we're going to break this down into more detail on the next slide. So here are some examples of those division offerings at a glance. At the division level, we support teachers in learning how to use new display technology, for example, how to use the learning management system. We also offer elective courses for teachers to sign up for in our PLMS, like using accessibility tools and research tools, translation. An example of a project that resulted in PD is down there in the bottom left. Our broadcasting hardware has been failing, so we've recently renewed and replaced that equipment, and we'll be providing training for all of those teachers and technology support staff. And then on the right, Megan mentioned earlier, one of our division PD offerings is our Making Connection session. So these are examples of sessions that LTI's offered just this past year. So you have a little glance at what we're doing there.
Next up is our second tier of support, which is our principal partnerships at the building level. In this tier, LTI supports school administrators and teachers with the creation and delivery of faculty-wide PD around technology as well as developing a healthy technology culture in the building. In practice, this tier typically looks like supporting school principals around the creation of PD which specifically implements division initiatives driven by the strategic plan or in helping a principal to more effectively reach goals as outlined in their school improvement plan, more commonly known as a SIP. This frequently manifests as all-staff PD, delivered usually at a faculty meeting, office hours, or through PLC support. These PDs are frequently supported by the school's technology team as well, which is a group of teachers that is led by the LTI. And above are just a few examples of the many different PDs that we have supported. In total, this year, we have counted a total of thirty all-staff PDs delivered across the division, with more on the horizon before the school year ends. And of course, perhaps most importantly, is the form of job-embedded value-added coaching, which is aligned with division, school, and individual teacher needs. This can take the form of many topics, which will be explored more deeply through data in just a moment. LTI's regularly meet with teacher partners identified through a myriad of means with the aim of helping teachers implement technology in healthy ways which increase student voice and engagement or allow for effective differentiation to reach all students. Teachers are able to earn recertification points as a result of their work with an LTI PD, as you can see, is job-embedded, self-directed, just-in-time, content-focused, and collaborative in alignment with the guiding principles of ACPS PD. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but I invite you to take a look at it later after this evening. So, let's look at some data. All this data is taken from our coaching platform called Connect Hub. It is where every single week, an LTI will go in and log all of the interactions that they have had with teachers, specifically what it is that they did with that teacher and how it aligns with various priorities across all sorts of different spheres that we are interested in tracking data on. Please note, we don't have time to examine every single data point you're going to see today, and we even have more data than what you're going to see today. So if you want more, we are happy to provide it afterwards. Please also note that you're going to see mostly data from this year, and that is because we realigned our tagging structure over the summer, just to better align with some of the more recent initiatives and priorities, our mission, that sort of thing. So we don't, you're not going to see data from year to year, but if you would like us to go back and figure out some of that for you, we can certainly do so. Regarding our teacher partners this year, we have supported nearly twelve hundred educators, which represents ninety percent of our teachers.
So just to give you some context for that last slide, what those interactions look like, these are the different types that we tag. We have the majority of time, LTI spend in the classroom co-teaching and modeling technology-infused and enriched lessons, but we also provide just-in-time support, which looks like tool-specific technical training, and we attend meetings and co-plan with teachers technology lessons and developing technology-infused projects.
These are some of the division priorities in alignment with our strategic plan. You can see the item, the line item of the strategic plan there on the left and the number of interactions supported this year across the division. On the right, you see how we have tracked use of various hardware that you all have granted in the budget for us to support. So we obviously have an obligation to make sure that those finances are spent responsibly and implemented well.
This is a unique one. This is the VDOE Digital Learning Integration Standards. These were just adopted in 2020 by the state, and they're unique in that they're called SOLs, but they are designed to be integrated with content. So they are not to be taught in isolation. The emphasis is on how technology enhances students' understanding of content and also prepares them to be digital citizens in an ever-increasing digital world. One of our projects is drafting a curriculum framework around these standards so that teachers can grab a lesson and integrate it into their content area and help our students.
In the interest of time, we're going to pass computer science over. Not that it's not extremely important, but suffice it to say, we do support the VDOE Computer Science Standards K through eight.
Oh, is this me?
That's you.
Our final bit of data here shows some notable best practices supported by LTI's. All of this is using technology to help students to lift their voices, to improve their access to tools with translation and accessibility, and some other additional best practices that LTI's support.
So what impact does this have on students? Ultimately, our goal is to empower the voice of our students and their interests through technology, which opens up the world. We, of course, have to do that in a safe way. So if you look at the bottom right there, we do have an emphasis on digital citizenship, using technology in a way that is healthy, that's embedded through the curriculum. We also seek to differentiate through basic UDL, Universal Design for Learning principles. This is ways in which we reach our EL populations, our sped populations, and really every student that, every student learns differently, so. And finally, making meaning through our technology standards and helping our teachers to contextualize those into their setting. So, we're going to bring a couple teachers up for you. First, it's going to be Lenny Grasso. He works at Woodbrook and Red Hill. Lenny was asked at the very last minute to speak tonight. One of our other teachers got sick about a couple hours ago, so he's stepping in. We really appreciate him being here.
Hi, hello, yes. Lenny Grasso, I work at Woodbrook and Red Hill Elementary School. I'm one of two music teachers at Woodbrook. Woodbrook has one music room and two music teachers, so when we both, when we both teach at the same time, I am on a cart and I'm going into classrooms. So I sought out my learning technology integrator, Mia Shand, to think about what were ways that we could do music learning in the classroom that often is encumbered by desks and notebooks and student, you know, so many student materials that sometimes are not conducive to music learning. The picture that you see is the music room where there's a big, wide-open space in the middle. middle. So I sought out Mia Shan to develop a project that was about digital music composition. So with my fourth and fifth graders, we, over several weeks, created their own works of music in a way that reflects the way that music is made nowadays, with digital music production, synthesizers, and then an iterative process where they make something and they go back, they save it and go back. So that was a little bit about the project, and Mia and I would meet ahead of time. She would co-teach with me. We would reflect afterwards. Sometimes she would teach and I would observe. I would teach, she would observe, and give me feedback. That was a little bit of what our work looked like. My students really benefited from this because having another hand on deck to deal with the just-in-time technical issues that always come up. We had fourth graders who would open their computers, and they'd be completely dead, and figuring out where their chargers are. But not only that, but someone who was more plugged in with the digital, sort of the digital health of our students and our digital habits, how they would navigate to websites. So with a 25-minute class period, streamlining that was really important. So really maximize learning with someone who could basically know exactly what to say to get them on Google Drive really quickly. And she also pushed me, for my practice, to plan my lessons with the affordances of a tool in mind. So what can this tool do? How will the students react to what they see? How will that guide what they do, either on purpose or by accident? So I didn't want to restrict or constrict their music-making and their music composition. So she really helped me navigate that, and has also encouraged me, the way I talk about computers and computer use in my music lessons, has really transformed because of what I saw her do, what we did together. So that's a little bit of what me and Mia, who could not be here tonight because last-minute edition, but Mia Shan is a wonderful learning technology partner. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex Groth, and I am a teacher at Walton Middle School. I teach seventh-grade social studies to students, and this is...
Hi, I'm Chris Shedd. I am a learning technology integrator at Journey and Walton Middle School.
And so, throughout my time at an ACPS, I've really lived during this COVID age. And this COVID age has required technology to make sure that students have access, engagement, and critical thinking skills for this 21st-century world, and people like Chris Shedd and the other LTI's on the team have helped ensure that. One thing that we've done in our classroom in history class is one of the Virginia standards is for students to be able to locate and identify major US cities, as well as all the 50 states, which is classically really boring to teach and really boring to learn for students. And so, me and Chris worked together by collaborating during our planning to come up with this idea of a Scratch program. Chris, you want to tell them a little about it?
Sure. Scratch is great because it's easy for kids to learn, but it's real coding. And so I designed a lesson where Alex wanted, Alex always challenges me to, but he wanted me to cut the United States into pieces and have the kids program the pieces to go back to the right spaces. And then, the second part is they had a map of the United States, and they had to program the cities to move to the right coordinates on the map. And it's a great project because we provided the kids with the code, we told them how to use it, so the coding doesn't get in the way with the content, but you're still hitting that computer science standards, social studies standards. But what you find is kids, they'll customize it, they'll learn the coding, they really just jump on it and make it their own.
And we use this program to help all students access it at their different levels. So those students who may need more and have more access to coding in other classes, they can expand on their projects and go even farther by adding different animations, maybe even giving this map a story as it comes together. While our students who coding for the first time, maybe they don't have access to these electives that teach them coding, they get to touch base with that, and I think it's a wonderful system. Thank you.
So, we do not have a lot of time for questions. Despite our best efforts, we, of course, talked quickly. But any questions for us before we rotate, we'll also have time at the end, and I'm happy for you all to send us any emails, or we can follow up with you.
Quick question to you guys. How do you find the time? You guys said we use our planning time, but you kind of shared we do some of this by co-teaching, co-teaching, but how do you determine time?
Sure. So, the time that, I use planning time. But planning time with my LTI isn't just planning time to do the technology piece, right? We use that time together to not only collaborate as technology pieces, but as educators who have been in our different curriculums. And so while Chris Shedd has taught history, and that's been a great partnership, I've also worked with LTI's that have backgrounds in science, background in elementary, and so they actually bring their background knowledge to our plannings, so it extends. Does that answer the question?
I would just add, a nice thing about being LTI is we have built-in our schedules time where we can actually create that stuff for the teachers, and then we can teach them how to use it. So that's a great thing we can do for teachers.
And it's your requirement, is it a requirement, a job requirement that you, to be an LTI, you have to be a certified teacher?
Yes. We require five years of certified teaching before you can do it.
I want to just comment. Well, I was telling you that you were counterpart at Brownsville.
Yeah, Trevor Minder, yeah.
Right, and I sat in on one of his classes, and he was doing so much of what you were talking about, and the kids loved him, and he never had trouble keeping them, keeping their attention. And I can imagine you're kind of doing the same kind of thing, but it would be absolutely brilliant. I'm in Woodbrook tomorrow, and so I may look you up and try and see one of your classes.
Oh, great. We don't have students tomorrow, but...
And if I may add one thing, LTI's are super versatile in every technology thing that I've needed in the classroom. One thing that we do in our history classroom is National History Day. It's a competition that is held in our district, in our state, and in our nation, and we have kids from Walton Middle School attending state competition on Saturday, and that's in thanks partly to Chris Shedd teaching me and the students how to use those website components. He went out and learned them, and helped me learn, and the students.
Do you see a difference in utilization by the high school teachers versus elementary or how, how does that...
Utilization of the LTI. They are busy in different ways, I would say. Does that make sense? So the culture of an elementary school, teachers have to teach everything, and therefore are very open to seeking out coaching support. So I think we see a lot more modeling and co-teaching at the elementary level, where you're seeing a lot more sort of content and project support at the high school level. Does that make some sense? I can provide you some data around that if you'd like to see some.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've got two minutes, too.
Are LTI's, what is their coming days?
Jamie, teacher contract, LTI?
Teacher contract, yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Are you guys stationed, too?
Fast and furious, too.
Maybe we're all over here.
Do you guys have some water?
I guess it's better if you guys are running.
Okay, for now. Would you like some water? So, I'm going to give us a second to do some introductions. So I'm Ayanna Mitchell, Director of Equity Education.
Steven Turner, one of Equity Education Specialists.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Melissa Hairston, a first-grade teacher at Baker Butler Elementary School.
And hi, I'm Holly Gately, Assistant Principal at Stony Point Elementary School.
And that's our timekeeper.
That's all, that's all she does now. Y'all know who she is. So, how are you? Good. So we're going to do this fast and furious, we're going to try to leave a few minutes for you to ask some questions, but we can, who's, are you doing this slide? How do I do that?
You just walk up and hit the mouse.
Just walk up and hit the mouse with the arrow?
Or the arrow.
Awesome, okay.
Maybe not. No, yeah, that's right.
Alrighty, wonderful. So, this is just a slide just to kind of anchor us all into, you know, where do we fit within the division? So you will notice the ACPS mission statement, working together as a team will end the... you guys know that mission statement really well, right? That's near and dear to my heart, because that actually was derived from the equity mission statement that was previous before. So that already is very telling of our work. The Equity Specialists this year, which we have two new Equity Specialists that joined us for this school year, Steven being one of them, really had a chance to sit down and think about what is the work we're doing to reach the goal for 2026, to have our educators be credentialed. And one of the things we really thought about was that our role is to operationalize by operationalizing and promoting culturally responsive practices that will develop educator capacity to close achievement, opportunity, and access gaps in education, and that will know every educator. So, it's okay, it's okay. So, you'll see that we are pretty much seated in most of the strategic plan, but these are the two spaces that we are going to focus on today, because we're really thinking about how does our culturally responsive work and support look when we're working directly with our classrooms, with our educators? I will name, similar to what Megan named earlier, our work is very diverse, and it's really kind of hard to really think about what we do directly for teachers, because everything we do directly impacts teachers, because even if we're working with an administrator or developing someone else's capacity, it is to develop a teacher's capacity. So we'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. As mentioned, we have four Equity Specialists, and this is where they all land for most of the days. You could see they have a pretty big load, but they don't do it alone. We believe in working in a partnership to really support one another in each of those buildings, so this is what that breakdown looks like. One was to be able to support the training and development of our two new Equity Specialists, and two, because of the skills they bring to the table, we were really targeting their skill to the schools and the educators and what they needed based on the school improvement planning goals.
So this is a slide that's in all of the stations tonight to show how each of our groups fit into the ACPS support model. The Equity Specialists, we support through this support model. We provide job-embedded services. We try to intentionally structure our time so that we can be in buildings in the space and the time where teachers are doing their work to work alongside them. It is self-directed. Oftentimes, teachers will come to us with specific needs or desires. We may help them plan through or work through particular projects they may be trying to implement. A lot of them are working towards culturally responsive credentialing, and they'll come to us for support through that process. We provide just-in-time services. Again, if we're not present, we try to make ourselves available just about at-will for both principals and teachers. Things that happen to come up sometimes are just reviewing curricular resources or materials for cultural relevance or appropriateness, and sometimes, too, you know, as things change especially, we need to work through how to change as we move forward. It is content-focused. Really, when I look at this and compare what content focus means to the ACPS culturally responsive teaching framework that we kind of work from, it's really all about creating inclusive curriculum for every child to see themselves in, assessment modes that are varied so that all children have the ability to show their strengths, and differentiate an instruction that's based around student need, student culture, student identity. And what we do is collaborative. I was really encouraged when I saw the presentation that was in here before, because it made me think about some of the work we do. The number of times I've worked individually with teachers and been able to say, "I've seen this before. There's somebody else that's doing this," or "There's somebody else that's had this similar problem," and this is how they approached it. But even better, when I can say, "Let me reach out, and we'll connect you," and they can start working through this sort of thing, working through their challenges or initiatives together. So...
So we have lots of different interactions with our educators, as mentioned before. This is a little bit of a snippet of what that looks like. We offer individual coaching opportunities where we work one-on-one focused on their credential, but it also could just be an educator in a classroom who just really needs to think about, "How do I celebrate a holiday?" Or, "Is it appropriate to put the pilgrims and Indians up for Thanksgiving?" Right? Like, there's just things that we just work with them and think through that's not necessarily in the credentialing program. We offer small-group meetings and coaching through PLC structures, where Equity Specialists actually participate in PLCs and give feedback and support them through that conversation. We have administrative collaborative conversations where we really think about, "How do we support our administrators to be able to think about school-wide PD, teacher support, parent-community partnerships?" We support diversity-resourced teachers, as I like to call them, our many Equity Specialists that are school-based Equity Specialists, because they're able to really lead their school, and they're really the on-the-ground people that's doing this work. We offer school-wide PD for staff, and we have book studies that are division-wide, but they're also in schools and school-based. In all those spaces, we are able to really support our educators through individual coaching, group coaching, or lots of different iterations of that, but all of it really is thinking about how are we collaborative to serve the needs of our educators in order for them to serve their students well.
So, here are some numbers that require a little bit of explanation. So, the LTI's and instructional coaches are going to provide data that comes from a program called Connect Hub, and we had looked at something like that earlier. But you saw from the way we're divided, and there are only four of us, what we're really focused on is making sure that at the school level, we're providing services so that we can best utilize our resources in the places that are best served by what we have to offer. So our tracking, you know, we started using a system in November to track things a little bit more on a school level. How much time are we spending at different various schools? But what this chart shows and really kind of highlights is when we're in those spaces, how is the time allotted? What are the things that we tend to be doing when we're working in buildings? And you can see that the large majority of that time is spent, as Ayanna explained, in those individual coaching and small-group coaching sessions, and then right behind that, the time that we spend with building administrators and/or our diversity-resourced teachers to collaborate around ways that they can support teachers both individually and also on a whole staff level. And that kind of pulls us to really the big impact piece. It takes us back to that strategic goal we highlighted early on. In our culturally responsive teaching credentialing program, we have about 292 teachers that are currently employed in the division that are certified or micro-credentialed. This means that they went through at least a year of continuous reflection around professional learning, thinking about their professional growth, putting application into practice based on that growth, and documenting some type of student impact from the efforts that they made. And we expect about 165 additional submissions coming in this May.
Okay, we're problem-solving and doing the collaborative thing we always do around here. So, I would like to introduce you to, reintroduce you to Dr. Hairston and to Ms. Gately, who are going to talk a little bit about what that collaborative work looks like and what that feels like in their spaces.
So I just want to speak through my lens as being a diversity-resourced teacher. I have been for several years, and over those years have seen the model grow and evolve in some different ways. So when I think of myself as a participant, as someone who's receiving that professional development, and I think about our monthly DRT meetings where we are presented with professional development about evidence-based practices, as well as how we can shift and move our instruction so that we're impacting students. Secondly, I think about my own journey as a credentialing candidate. I am one of those 200-plus educators who have received their certification, and so just how invaluable the Equity Specialist has been as far as coming in, those individual coaching meetings that we had, talking through products, what is your equity... coaching meetings that we had, talking through products, what does your equity audit look like? How are you going to use that information? And then what are your next steps? How does that impact your students? So all of those kinds of conversations take place in those meetings, not just in your DRT meetings, but also at a smaller, more micro level with your equity education specialist. And then as, again, thinking of myself as a participant, going through the book study, using those professional resources to impact my work, to shift my thinking, to really look, zero in on the needs of students, we call them our focus students. But, but the great thing about culturally responsive teaching is you may be zeroing in on those focus students, but those shifts that you're learning from book studies like Zaretta Hammond's is actually impacting your whole classroom. So I found that to be very valuable. The, on the other side, as I was thinking about my start and where I am now, this has some things that have involved what, what new things I'm able to take advantage of. So one of those is just being able to present that, our, our regular requirement is to present that information to our faculty. So that's one thing a DRT does. But in addition to that, I have been able to collaborate with my equity specialists, meeting a lot of different pockets of stu-, of teachers within my school, leading cohort meetings, being able to have an opportunity to assess, be an assessor and looking at products, looking at other teachers' works, not just in my school building, but getting a wide variety of, you know, what, what is happening with regard to CRT work in other buildings and from other educators. And then the last thing that's, want to share is being able to lead cohort meetings. So it's one thing to share that professional development that I am getting from, from my DRT meetings, but it's yet another thing to actually sit down and grapple with the information, try to design a cohort that one is held locally within my own school building. And this year then, being able to do those same kinds of graplings and looking at and examining and designing, helping to design with the team, professional development sessions for the division. So it's, it's been a great journey and I'm looking forward to how the, the model is going to continue to evolve. Thank you.
I'm Paula Gailey and I'm the Assistant Principal at Stony Point Elementary School. I'd like to share a little bit about how I've collaborated with equity specialists over the course of the past two years in different capacities, but also in similar ways. Last year, as you can see from the left circle, I was a fourth grade teacher at Brownsville Elementary School and I was pursuing my own CRT certification. When I partnered with equity specialists around that work, it looked a lot of different ways. They were great reflective processing partners for me as I worked through confronting some of my own biases, disaggregating data, and determining how I could, how I could partner with our community and our families. They were available always for asynchronous meetings, so I would work on my product, send it over to one of them, they would add some comments, send it back, and we could communicate that way. We also regularly saw the equity specialist present in our school-based cohort meetings. I engaged in reframing the narrative at the elementary level, which was another opportunity for me to engage in the modules, but also partner with equity specialists and really continue my professional practice. This year, my experience looks a little bit different as an assistant principal. Really, my partnership with the equity specialist is for them, as Stephen had said earlier, building my professional capacity so that I can then build the capacity of our teachers in our buildings. So this year, Shay and Stephen, they're the two equity specialists that are paired with Stony Point, they've really provided me with the banks on the river, so to speak, so that I can create school-based professional development. At Stony Point, every single one of our instructional staff members has been engaged in this work over the course of the year because of the support that they've been able to provide me so that I can create those systems and structures for our teachers. Last year at Stony Point, we all did the book study and modules together. That was before I was there, so they all, I should say. And then this year, when I joined them, we've been focusing on the application piece, how we can really take that learning and put it into practice. In partnering with them, they've also helped me overlay CRT work with some of our existing systems and structures like professional learning communities so that CRT isn't just an agenda item that we talk about for a few minutes and then move on. It's really the lens with which we see all of the work that we do as a school to work on closing our achievement gaps. And lastly, I've continued to use our equity specialists as great reflective processing partners. They're there for me as a school leader as I work through how to continue my professional growth, how to still confront my biases, and figure out what's the best way to reach our community members. Thank you.
Thank you both. So at this time, I hope we have enough time to leave us with some questions. Come on up. So I would love for you to ask us a way of any questions you have about what we do, our program, any lingering thoughts.
I just, I'd love to be able to include our, the whole teaching experience, the whole learning experience, where this was back in 2016 and where it is today, and you all are doing wonderful work. Just as my art style.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Having said that.
Having said that. And on that note, but.
No, I do see that there's a, in terms of school-wide student, there's a great area of doing it for all these, like, kind of, kind of, uh.
Taking re.
Taking, yeah. And, and one of the schools, the Meyer District, Greer, I'm disappointed.
Don't be disappointed. Stephen could definitely talk about that.
Finish the question, but I would share just to shout out them and really to give credit to Wendy Eckerly at Greer has provided so much space and time for her staff this year and in a similar way to what Paul has done at Stony Point, really provided a pathway for the teachers there and provided structure and support. And I'm there with another partner and we've had so many opportunities to push into that school and work with smaller teams and teachers. So that's one reason why we do try to kind of track things on that school level because we can see things like that where another school, if you looked at Burley, I could, I could name a lot of really good work that's going on there this year. So again, it kind of helps us support people in the places where it's needed.
I'd like to ask you that I'm really excited to see what the numbers look like after this year. I know that for Stony Point, we had some changes in staff and we had the lonely number one up there on the graph, but all of our staff 100% are engaged in this process. Half of them are currently pursuing certification or a micro. And then of the half that aren't, half of those, another 25% are looking to extend until next year. So we should be looking at going from one staff member to 75%.
To sort of have to get incredible amounts.
Yes, yes.
And with the book studies, we probably have.
Yes. And the book study ensures, I would have to say honestly, I, I really appreciate the credentialing process because it really got people thinking about, it's a thing you have to do. But personally, I want people to be culturally responsive in our school division and if they get their credential, that's even better because that is the goal we need to reach. But really thinking about how do we ensure that we have culturally responsive educators in our buildings, which is why the book study is so important because at least you have the foundational understanding, even if you're not quite to the, I'm going to write a paper part yet. But they're really starting to understand and get the support around how to be a culturally responsive educator even before they may choose to follow through with being, getting their micro-credential or certification.
How.
So that's not indicative of who's culturally responsive in a building, that's just who has pursued and completed the process.
You had been to local before required by 2026. What specifically is that required? What level of certification are you targeting now?
So I believe the school board in 2019, 2020 or something like that. As that we have our educators complete, who are currently at the time employed here, complete a micro-credential by 2026. And then incoming educators have three years to get that micro-credential. So that is something that is currently still the expectation.
Is it real?
Uh, we are working towards it. This year, we have a good group of people who are going through. There are some adjustments we're looking at to make it a little bit more systematized in our own programming to really differentiate the difference between learning and understanding the things you need to be able to do and actually doing an action research initiative towards that. Cause again, those numbers show who completed a micro-credential or certification. That does not show who has learned how to be culturally responsive educators. That just shows those are the people who are like, okay, I'm going to write the paper and I'm going to submit now. So I don't know that that's completely fair to say that that is reflective of how many people have been trained and know how to be culturally responsive.
And I guess my question fundamentally is how aspirational is it versus the requirement? And do we need to be busy at some point?
Let's, let's see where we go. Let's see where we go. Let's keep moving forward. I don't know that we want to remove the fact that people need to do it. They need to know that they've got to get there and there's a timeframe in order to get there, but you know.
My question on that is like, is there additional support you guys need, right? Like this is a, like this is a tough journey to take people on.
Yep.
And it is not like, all credentials are difficult, but I would say this is probably more difficult, right? It is about yourself.
Yep.
If that's difficult to do. And so that would be a question as we think about that, like looking at that data, like where we are, where do we need to go, what do you guys need?
Mm-hmm. That's a great question.
Maybe you're right about the deeper understanding versus the pro-culturally.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I think that as we really think about how to continue to do, like Megan and I have really been looking a lot about what's professional, what professional learning we have division-wide and what does that look like as it attaches to our culturally responsive teaching model? I think that what has happened is that our division is continued to move towards being a culturally responsive school division. I don't know that all of the teachers understand that when they're doing these different things, that it is culturally responsive things they're doing. They think, oh, I gotta go be culturally responsive now. Oh, now I gotta go do this thing, not realizing when I'm in PLC and asking those questions in my PLC time and really thinking about student and student achievement and who's benefiting and who's not, and what do I need to do about instruction, that is what we're talking about when we're talking about culturally responsive teaching practices. When we're talking about differentiated learning, we are talking about culturally responsive practices. So just really trying to align all of those pieces so that people understand how they connect, so that they are not caught in that mind block and then feeling like, I can't do it, it's too hard, this is too much. That's our time.
The role.
I didn't hear.
The role, um, you're a diversity resource teacher, did I say that right?
Yes.
Would you just help me for a second to understand? You're, you're a classroom teacher and?
I am.
Yeah. And then how, like, I just, that is just a new role for me here, but I just wanted to understand.
Yes. So I am a classroom teacher. And then the meetings that I mentioned, we have those monthly, but in addition to that, supporting candidates, so anybody who identifies or have, shows they have the intention to go through the process, we also support them as well as, it could be weekly meetings, depending on that candidate's availability, weekly meetings, monthly meetings, we're going through products, we're thinking about, do you have all of the steps that you need to meet your credentialing to, to have a successful product?
Thank you so much. If you have more questions, y'all know where to find me.
One, one of those. That's what's better.
Do you guys know where you're going?
3:20, right?
That's what I, yep.
All right.
Can they sit? Oh, no, no chairs. I don't know that there are enough chairs.
Okay.
Do you want me to come?
No, it just feels like, you know.
I know.
More intimate if it's.
It's awkward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wherever you're going.
Let's be fancy.
You guys want to go up there and.
Yeah, you go up there and there's a sign. Sorry.
Can I just click them up?
Should be able to click them up.
Okay. That's good to know. We've had some technology snafus, so.
We're from LTI, bro.
We worked it out, it's all good.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you, members of the board, for joining us tonight to hear about how instructional coaching supports the goals of professional development in Alamo County Public Schools. Instructional coaches are educators who sit side-by-side and work collaboratively with teachers in classrooms. My name is Ashley Roberts. I'm a former instructional coach and current lead coach for mathematics.
And I'm Damon Schneider, former instructional coach and current lead coach for visual and performing arts. And I will introduce this graphic here with, which is our instructional coaching model and mission. We are a networked community of educators using a plan-to-study act approach, providing personalized job-embedded learning through cognitive, through, and differentiated collaborative experiences through a cognitive coaching practice. As we partner with teachers to actualize professional goals, support the continuous improvement of curriculum assessment and instruction in order to foster a culture of collaborative, reflective public practice in service of the mission of Alamo County
So the instructional coaching model aligns with the professional development guiding principles by providing teacher-driven, collaborative, side-by-side support engaging in reflective improvement cycles. So our model is structured in a way that each coach serves multiple schools to deepen network relationships throughout Alamo County.
We're going to go quickly through several slides with a lot of data on them that you have in your packet. As we go through these, please feel free to take notes and there will be time for some questions afterwards. I would like to point out in here that so far this year, we have supported about half of our faculty in 730 educators and we have 20 coaches in our current cohort. Time spent with educators looks different depending on the partnership type. As Dr. Sawyer mentioned in her video, one effective strategy of implementing professional development is that it is sustained over time. The majority of our interactions, the slide shows, lead to sustained or consistent partnerships. This data shows the number of interaction, interactions by partner type. Novices include first and second-year teachers who have, who have dedicated coaching support once every week or two. Veterans are classified as teachers who have more than two years of experience in the classroom. And we also do a lot of work with school-based professional learning communities. This slide shows the number of coaching interactions by areas of support. We've identified many themes in our coaching work. These are the most common ways teachers drive their professional learning.
As we move into the next three slides, we feel like this data is a representation of how instructional coaching aligns directly with the ACPS mission and vision. This data represents how we support teacher-driven professional development by supporting culturally responsive teaching and learning as well as engaging with teachers in the educator performance appraisal process.
What does that mean?
The educator perform. So teachers ask for help in creating and writing their goals so that they are smart and measurable and so, okay? Done?
And then also follow up with periodic check-ins.
All right. Another focus of our work supports equity of access to high-quality curriculum for all This last data slide shows how our focus aligns to high-quality instruction in our classrooms. We provided a lot of data, very quickly, for your review. You may also hear more detail about some of these data points from our speakers. They will introduce themselves and share about their coaching experiences and we look forward to any questions at the end. We'll start with Ms. James. All right. Another focus of our work supports equity of access to high-quality curriculum for all This last data slide shows how our focus aligns to high-quality instruction in our classrooms. We provided a lot of data very quickly for your review. You may also hear more detail about some of these data points from our speakers. They will introduce themselves and share about their coaching experiences and we look forward to any questions at the end. We'll start with Ms. James.
Hello. I am Shantae James and I am a kindergarten teacher at Mountain View Elementary School. I decided to have a coach my first year through A C P S since I was coming to the district as a, a former private school teacher. My coach helped me to learn the curriculum, took me to observe at other schools and covered for me to observe my colleagues. I was given the necessary support needed to be successful. My second and third year, my coach helped me to become micro certified and ultimately fully credentialed in CRT, which is a goal I set for myself. This year, I wanted a tangible way to track progress from my grade level as a team leader and my coach has supported and learned with me as we created a data document that has been very successful in my grade and hopefully to be used for other grades next year. Even as a veteran teacher, the coaching model has made me a better educator to the point that I just got accepted to be a reading specialist, which has been a big goal for myself. And through my coaches, I've met that goal and going to have other goals because of them as well. Thank you.
Kevin Matheny. I'm the engineering teacher at Western Alamo High School. I signed up to get a coach the very first year they put him out there because I wanted to see what it was about. And I've had a coach every year since. I've met, I think for the past eight or nine years, every week with my coach unless something, you know, caused a problem there. I'm done unless y'all have questions later.
Ms. Engel.
Hi. I'm Jane Engel. I am currently an instructional coach at Monticello High School, Burley Middle School, and Walton Middle School. I previously taught at Journey and I have two children in the division, one at Monticello and one at Burley. I'd like to speak to how does coaching support student learning? And I would like to just share that the basis of the coaching, the coach-teacher partnership is really one of trust and vulnerability. It's built over intentional conversations that can at times ask people to expose their worries, their concerns, where their areas of growth are. And frequently that involves showing data about how our children are and then working through the data. Who's benefiting from instruction? Who's not? What's within our control in order to make improvements in the classroom? So we spend a lot of time together thinking about teaching practices and the impact of those. And every day looks a little different. We coach novices to veterans. Just yesterday, I spent a morning micro modeling how to run stations in a sixth grade E L A class with differentiated reading and ended my day in an A P physics class with a teacher who was looking to recertify as a nationally board certified teacher. So the work is varied and different, but it all is in an effort to sustain teachers and increase efficacy and also to increase equitable outcomes with our students. So thank you.
Mr. Hobson.
I'm John Hobson. I'm currently the assistant principal at Murray Elementary. Prior to that, I was an instructional coach actually when the model started and went back to teaching after coaching and became a lead coach and then now into building level administration. I think I'll specifically just talk about a curriculum initiative that I was a part of as a lead coach, which was reframing the narrative and how coaches supported that. Both in the sort of fostering and the sort of the thinking with teachers about what that was going to be and what our vision and goals for reframing the narrative was. So coaches were at the table for that. But then as we started onto our sort of professional learning journey, having those coaches, instructional coaches embedded in the learning with teachers to push their thinking, to develop, you know, better curricular products. And then sort of finally on the implementation side. So sort of being there from the genesis and then, you know, through the production and now into the implementation, I think coaches being there and job embedded helped, you know, that initiative to begin to, you know, to take off.
Do you have questions for us?
What, what?
You guys will go back down. You'll be ready. Questions. You said you were ready for a question. So ask it to me if you have a question.
I have another question. What do you, as instructional coaches, do to be an instructional coach? What is your P D? What do you do?
Well, it's a great, we all belong to clusters with a lead coach at our helm. So we, as a group of instructional coaches, meet together weekly and we determine our own goals as a cluster. So that would include shared readings, reflection, we go through protocols. We also meet as an instructional coach PLC. So that's the entire division, all of the coaches in the division meet together. It's twice a month, is that correct? And we develop goals there and then get professional development from each other and from the coaches.
How many in total instructional coaches do you have?
We have 20 instructional coaches this year and there's eight lead coaches. Is that right? Am I right to add there? Eight.
It strikes me that you all must be some of the best listeners and, and most of the people in the system because everybody needs to be listened to, especially if you want to share with your members.
I'm curious, what, I always believe that the people who are being coached are the best advocates for the teachers. I'm curious when other people who live in Western kind of talk to you, are they like, why did you find a coach or how is it helpful?
I'm an A wing.
So.
I had teachers come down today because my coach had helped me set up an activity today.
Yeah.
And it was the best activity. The principal came down and normally they're after kids and I said, "Are you sure for kids?" And she said, "No." I said, "You're here for the activity." So and she said, "Yes." And it's the first time in 32 years that when I was doing an activity that an administrator came down and made me feel important.
Those kind of things.
Well, with an activity.
Yeah.
I mean, engaging with the kids because it was an activity where you spoke with each kid. We did like a little mini Shark Tank activity. It'd been set up for about five weeks. And then the teachers all thought it was good. And I'm sitting back just kind of in awe, wondering if it's good because, you know, needing feedback from them. And everybody seemed to think it went really well. And then when the principal showed up, that was, like, kind of, it was good.
It speaks to like the, the public practice element of the coaching model is like trying to break down walls and making sure that the A wing person feels connected to the building. You know, coaches, I think, even when I was using coaches, like it was often because I felt isolated, you know, but I was teaching, I was a singleton teaching something and I needed somebody to collaborate with.
Are there teaching requests from coaches?
Typically, we meet with staff at the beginning of the school year, the introductory meetings in August. And then we usually follow up with a form. And then our goal too is in between meetings to be in public spaces. So that we're open for conversation and acknowledging and being part. And like John mentioned this in one of the others, like becoming part of the culture. So attending staff developments, attending meetings and being present. We also try to, when we're invited, attend PLC meetings. And then that has a tendency to drum up business for us because we, we get to be a part of the planning and reflection and say, "Oh, do you think we could meet after to talk about how we would analyze this data?" "Sure, let's set up a time." And so that's how, it's a really natural progression in schools. But we make ourselves quite available. Let's just put it that way.
I think what you were saying about being good listeners, listening for openings, right? To sort of capitalize on that moment and say, "Okay, I hear you're wrestling with this and, and, you know, why don't we, let's do something about that."
I would like to say something. I think most veteran teachers could benefit a lot, but that pride thing of being a veteran teacher, I think gets in the way. And I think if, if they could meet with each department, as, you know, because at Western, all the, each department of teachers are, have their own planning and they might have a better impact because they can see some of the benefits if one teacher in there is getting it. Because I'm not sure how. I share out, but it's not like, like the only one of me in the building. So not like I'm, the English teachers don't talk to me. So they're not going to know. Today was a good thing though.
I'm sorry if I forgot your name. You said you started almost immediately when you became an A C P S.
Yes, ma'am.
You had details with that.
So I was at a private school and I taught kindergarten, first grade, and fourth grade math for two years there. And then I got my position at Mountain View as kindergarten teacher. So I've been there, this is my fourth year at Mountain View. So when I first started, I was like, "Well, I'm gonna need help because I'm new here and I don't know your curriculum and I don't know what's pals and those type of things." And at first I was like, "Okay, who's going to help me?" And people are like, "Well, novices, they get coaches." And I was like, "Oh, okay." So I went, I was like, "Well, I'm a novice," right? They were like, "Actually, you're not a novice. You have experience." And I was like, "Wait, what?" I was like, "So I'm not going to need help?" And so they were like, "Well, not the novice help." And so finally someone was like, "Well, you can get a coach." And so I am a little more introverted in the beginning. So actually this coach, she's not here anymore, but my first coach was Shelby Matthews. And she just walked up to me and I was like, "Okay, you're my coach." Because I was like, she just started a conversation with me. And so I had her for two years and she took me to different schools like Woodbrook so I could just see different ways that I could run my classroom. And that's how I pretty much learned what I can do and what I felt like worked for me. And then my second year, Shelby and I both decided to get micro credentialed at the same time. So we were working together, both completing our micro credential reading and studying, doing our reports together. And then she left and I ended up getting Megan. And Megan was already fully certified in CRT. So she helped me through the whole process to get my full credential. Then she left to be an equity specialist. And now I have Victoria. And Victoria and I have been, we made a document that is easy for us to see the growth that's going on in my grade level. And so this is a document that we are hoping to use with other grades and have quarterly data meetings to set goals as teams to help our kids. And we have seen amazing growth in kindergarten just by communicating with one another every quarter and saying, "Okay, I am struggling here with my students, but I see that you have gotten this. So what are you doing in your room so I can mirror that and have that same success?" And so that's what's been going on in here. It's been pretty awesome to see.
Is all coaching voluntary? So for novice teachers, so the brand for brand new teachers, if it's a requirement?
It's a requirement. Year one and year two.
Year one and year two. And then is it required for anyone else?
It's a requirement.
Teachers?
Administrators.
Have you all used technological devices as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you been to the lab before?
Oh, yeah. If it's, if it kind of pays for it, I'm using it. They pay for a coach, I'm using the coach.
That's a good one. Perfect.
I'm sorry.
That's a good way to put it.
I'm not sure that anybody shared yet, but one of the things that the three groups do monthly is meet together. So the, the coaches that are assigned to a school, the L T Is assigned to a school, and equity specialists assigned to a school, they call that their connected team meeting. And so once a month they meet. So they're, they're trying to pretty much spread the wealth, right? Because there's things that they can talk to each other about or things that are hot topics or the coach wants to learn more about the technology or about the CRT credentialing process, then that gives them time to learn from each other so that they don't necessarily have to send a teacher to three different people. So that has been, I think, an improvement over time that we've gotten better at the, the supports to the teacher working together.
The coaches are coaching the coaches.
The coaches are coaching coaches.
But we didn't wait at one point, have a few more learning instructional coaches?
We, we're staffed at 25, but we do say to schools after June 1, we won't take, we won't employ more teachers. Our coaches come from our teaching ranks.
Right.
They're not outside. None of our instructional coaches are, come from the outside. And so the intention then is they come, they go back into the organization in some fashion. We have some data on that if you're ever interested. But.
So no, John isn't getting enough.
Yeah. When they, this year, we did not, were not, weren't able to fill four, four positions. So those were open this year. But we are, we have filled them for next year. So we'll be up to 25.
No, I thought we had authorized 25 and we were 23 for one.
We were. But we're back to 25. The original model, you know, 15 years ago, 10, 12 years ago, when it was, it was, at the time, the, the ratio was so that we had 30 coaches. But that was a, that was a national ratio that we were trying to, that was the standard we put in place. We never got to that. 25 has been the most.
But by having different coaches, you probably, I mean, it's good to have the first two years with the same coach, but then having different coaches do different sorts of influence, I would guess.
Different perspectives, different ways to look at things for, as an educator because all my coaches were different and how they viewed things and how they assisted me in ways I wouldn't have thought myself because it's a different lens.
And have you had different coaches in your career?
Well, yeah. About the time, I think I've had nine. I'm not sure. But by the time I start clicking with the coach, I lose them. They'll get, they'll get there three years in and switch. But they try to, try to feed another good coach my way. So, because they know I'm trying to take advantage of it.
I think I was originally a coach in his classroom, learning the ropes.
Learning the ropes.
Yeah. Well, that, and I had previously been a teacher in that same building, but not made it down to the A wing into his classroom. And so I think like, another part of the coaching model is obviously the development for the coach themselves, right? To sort of experience and then go back into the system, you know, and to have a sort of more global perspective of education. Because you, in your classroom, you can get caught there and not see the wider world.
You kind of see the larger world?
Well, it's, it's helpful to understand like, you know, how initiatives affect people in different ways, right? And not that you're the only person in the universe that, that's, so it's to have a more global perspective of the division and how it operates, I think is, is a benefit of the model.
Thank you all.
This gives a natural perspective. We can sort of wave our hands and say, "Okay, instructional coaches for CRT, we've got a year 20, whatever, 26, but it's always been a couple of people who act with us. The pros and the cons.
So people, people should be coming back soon?
Well.
You're very welcome.
I used to.
Thanks.
I need to find Clay.
Are you coming back down?
Clay has, Clay has my, my fob. So if you want to snag him and great, I'll get it and then bring it back. So I hope.
Do you want this in the classes?
Yeah, then I'll have two. Yeah, then I'll have two.
I think I'm okay. I like Mr. Matheny.
All right, thank you, it's good to see you again.
Who's the other timekeeper? Uh, Dr. Pfizer? Yes. They, they get, they get a 50. Timekeepers are supposed to be back right now.
Zero.
Zero.
We give zero stuff.
Patrick said the surgery went well and that, uh, his wife did that. Perhaps it talks about timekeepers. They were waiting till, that was at 6:30 when I texted. So I met, I imagine that he's. Didn't sound like it. Anytime. Yes, it's in, they're in the works with J and U. And they're, they're getting close to being completed. And then they're just looking at how to regroup to make sure that like everybody's aware. But I'm happy to give you more information on that. Yes. And I know you asked about the, like, cost and it's contingent upon, on whether the university will. Like, so like, can't give you a definite, but like, I think we put the cost in.
I mean, it's a professional development model.
Yes, perfect.
You do, if you have lead coaches, you have lead coaches and if the teacher needs improvement, lead coaches work with them. And that's a valid principle and have a relationship to the churches so they can. Get the, make that connection between the instructional coach and the, and the teacher.
That might be a little more reluctant, yeah. They, they, and that's what they do. They, they suggest to teachers.
It's about P G M. You know, like I had a board of supervisors, remember, ask me when I came to a board of board presentation last night came to, and they were asking me about.
Oh, yeah. Six.
And I said, it's a, it's a form.
I haven't. Yeah, no, I knew it. No, that's. Uh, no, 14, yeah, 14 LCIs and then an A D and a manager. And then four. Equity specialists. But they're really, they'd be a teacher. He says it's a small segment.
Books or, you know, more materials, perhaps even more teachers. But it, you know, it is.
Each school has a.
And I think, you know.
Diversity, diversity resource teacher, but that isn't, but they are.
There's a teacher that's just an extra.
There we go. So before we move to the question and debrief, I would just like to share with you some both, both short term and long term next steps regarding the implementation of the goals for the Office of Professional Development. I have identified the following to increase our support for teachers. As you are debriefing, I will be listening to your feedback as well to identify other areas for improvement. We will continue to track our teachers' engagement and professional learning opportunities and focus on adding more in-depth opportunities for teachers to deepen their understanding and practice. We are currently working on planning C A I, which is our Curriculum Assessment Instruction Institute that happens every year in June with an emphasis on differentiation. This will be our second cohort of teachers with the ultimate goal of having all teachers have, having the ability to participate. We will stand up the reading cohort and finalize the pathways to special education teachers. Also looking at a T A to teacher model and look to expand these cohorts into other areas of endorsement. Additionally, we will look to expand our partnerships with the Education and Human Development Learning Community. And then by the end of August, I will provide you all an updated professional development plan for the 23, 24 school year. So those are our kind of short term and long term goals. Before we move to the debrief, are there any questions that you would like me to answer before we move on?
One question. With the Kate and I, we were talking about is a little bit about incentivizing teachers. And so it's been a while since I renewed my teacher license, so I'm not up on this. What, what are you able to give credit for in regards to kind of coach, like coaching work and equity work, book study, those kinds of things?
With the, with the certification and micro credential process, the office, Ms. Mitchell and I have worked together to look at what those steps in the process look like. So that we can give teachers recertification points throughout the time. Coaching, any coaching interactions, the coach logs those interactions throughout the year. And then we upload those interactions to our P L M S system automatically for teachers to show in the transcript. So with this new P L M S system, as long as it is true professional learning, we typically can give points for up. We usually start at an hour. So this year, when we did Making Connections, when teachers attended hour and a half sessions, we were able to give them points for it because they registered for those sessions. But it really, the, kind of the idea is, is that we're deepening practice and understanding. We're not just having a meeting. So a meeting wouldn't count for recertification points. But if it's really a place in which we're learning together, then we do give certification points.
Thank you.
She's still my question. How do you decide what, I mean, I love this session because of the L T I and the equity specialist and the, and the coaches. But then you also have P D in the courses at the C A I. And how do you decide what courses you're going to offer or how were those curricula developed?
And when are the decisions made?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of different mechanisms for feedback. Of course, we listen to principals and what they're hearing in terms of trends. And we listen for trends to look at what we're going to offer at the division level. Our lead coaches work very closely with our principals and we get feedback through that mechanism. We also look at what, you know, what's current best practice and where do we feel like we need to start some new education for? We make those decisions at the, I participate in the lead coach meeting every week. And we kind of make those decisions with the Office of Instruction together. In addition, Ms. Mitchell and I meet frequently to talk about what she's seeing in terms of trends. And so I have, I collaborate with a lot of different departments to hear kind of what their needs are. For example, this year I've worked with the Department of Transportation a couple of times to help provide support for bus drivers as well. So I kind of, you know, make myself available to all the departments and then see in what ways I can help and act as a connection and a hub to provide support.
How do you solicit feedback from teachers on the quality of your offerings?
Typically, we use exit slips and, and use that data and then read the data and talk about what, what do you need? So for example, as we're planning, last year we did an exit slip at C A I. We're starting to plan for C A I this year, so we pulled out all those exit slips, read through the data, looked at where we felt like we could make some, you know, changes to be responsive to that feedback.
Well, real quick, the next slide, just discussion? Okay, so we're going to continue with this, okay?
Yeah, I'm going to, what I, my plan was for me to kind of sit down and listen to you all have a discussion. And I provided some sample questions and I was going to kind of take notes to listen for the trends. But if you have more questions directly from me, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, I imagine those two things are kind of going to blend in together, but I'm happy to move to just discussion, unless there's. You can kind of take a log of questions.
Yeah, that was the plan.
Okay, with the budget that was adopted.
One more question.
Are there any things that you think that you would need that maybe the budget would not be able to provide?
I think this year, one of the things that we're looking at, I've reached out to the Department of Human Resources to ask them to look at how other districts are compensating people for professional development to make sure that we're in alignment with that. We're also looking at P D R P funds, but for next year, I anticipate that we'll be fine. But once we do some more research, there may be, I may be looking to ask for some additional funds or looking to be, you know, some more support in that area. additional funds or looking to be, you know, some more support in that area. But for next year, I anticipate that we'll be fine.
Within the universe of professional development, do you or other staff go to national meetings? How do you get, how do you get pollinated from outside?
Yes, so on the slide that we talked about for the variety of formats, we do send staff to conferences. So one of the conferences that we attend annually is the Avid Conference because all of our secondary schools participate in the Avid program to a variety of degrees. So we send our staff to the Avid program on a regular basis. One of the things that we do to support new administrators is send them to the EdLeader 21 conference. And then each year, we look at two content areas and see where the national conference is, and if it's on the East Coast, then we send out a compass message and say, we're taking 10 teachers to this conference with the expectation that all of the people who attend conferences then come back and contribute to some professional learning. So we ask them to do Making Connection sessions, or do book studies, or provide some in-house professional development from what they've learned.
Thank you.
You might not know the answer to this, but somebody here probably does. How are the Equity Specialists categorized in the budget? Are they sort of considered professional development, or are they instructional? Because we just heard that we don't have enough Equity Specialists, but you just said you have enough, everything that you need for, from the budget, you know, for professional development.
Equity Specialists don't fall under.
Under professional development.
Under professional development.
Instructional?
Office of Community Engagement, right?
Office of Community Engagement, okay, different bucket.
Different bucket.
Different bucket of money. But they do a lot of professional development.
I think it's fine for us to move to discussion, and then perhaps, I mean, you might want to stay up there. It seems like it's probably going to be a mix of us having just questions to ask and conversations with ourselves. And I guess I would, I would like to just, please, you would surprise me. I mean, I guess we can just go through. So what pleased people? People. Does anyone want to point out anything they were happy about?
Sure, you know, I think, well, I know that what pleased me is in every single session, everybody was so professional, somebody, there was structure to what everybody was doing, and they were all enjoyable presentations. I learned a lot from every single one. And what surprised me was at the very end of the ones in here, I didn't realize that there was such interaction among the three groups on a regular basis, and whether it was weekly or whatever. Because the strength of that type of activity, I mean, it's just going to be so enriching, you know, for everybody concerned and the teachers, and as a result, the students. That was a surprise to me, I didn't know that.
Okay, a combination surprise and pleased is that I didn't think of all of those different things that you presented tonight as being all involved in professional development. So just hearing that was really, really surprising and pleasing.
I think one of the things that, I will echo what my colleagues, Graham and John Oset, but I was surprised at the variability across schools in terms of embracing CRT. And then I was also surprised, oh, I think he's gone, that the engineering teacher from Western, you know, talking about the resistance of some veteran teachers to a lot of this. Whether it was instructional coaches, I'm assuming possibly the other two, you know, learning technology integrators and CRT. So wondering what incentives might be built into.
That was kind of my question to my, on my kind of PD points, and I'm glad you brought up compensation, is like, how do we incentivize teachers to continue to take advantage of these great resources that we're offering?
I think that, as I was listening, I was trying to figure out, because, you know, I wrote a script tonight because I wanted to be really intentional about the things that I said. And I was like, how am I going to get off script to kind of share this aha that I had as everybody was listening? And the one thing that I think helps with staff engagement is collaboration, and I think that theme came through really clear. And so the question is, is how do we, and Dr. Sawyer spoke to the isolationism that can happen in schools when you don't collaborate, right? So it's like, how can we continue to leverage some of the mechanisms we have in place, like PLCs, and having coaches reach out specifically to people to really engage? Because you can incentivize with money, but really, the successes that you see in the classroom are really, is what's going to build the momentum. And so I think that's what, I think we just figure, need to figure out how to invite the veterans into this conversation in creative ways, because once they have that success, they're going to do what Mr. Matheny did. I mean, he just came up and presented and said, worked with a coach the very first year of the model and have been doing it ever since. Like, how simple is that testimony to that? So I think that's something that, you know, we need to think about, is how do we engage veterans in collaboration who have been used to going into classrooms and working in isolation?
I guess another question I have is, you know, one of our highest priorities is reducing the achievement gap, and how does this get us there? I mean, I'm assuming it does.
Yeah.
But it's not a direct, obvious route necessarily. And conceptually, it is, and I think there's pieces of it that's evidence-based. But I think another way to incentivize, you know, teachers is seeing the results.
And I think that speaks to, if you remember back to the instructional coaching slide where they talked about supporting teacher goal setting. Teachers are responsible every year for, in their evaluation at the beginning of the year, of setting student academic progress goals, and also they're responsible for setting professional development goals at the same time. So if those two goals match, then we can look to see, is the professional learning having an impact on the student achievement? So that is one way that we can start to look to measure that. The other component is, is when I was designing the presentation, we have a framework for quality learning, and I thought about talking about how all of these touch on that framework for quality learning, because, you know, high-quality instruction is going to lead to student achievement, right? So I think if we can be really intentional about drawing the through line of how all of these things support the framework for quality learning and being really intentional and thoughtful about that, I think that will also have an impact on student achievement. And I think that's an area for growth. Like, how does responsive classroom support the framework for quality learning? How do these professional learning opportunities that we provide, like, how is that embedded in what we know is best practice?
So I would echo that. I guess it'd probably be in the, what would you like to see more emphasis on in the upcoming A tie to student achievement and outcomes. I'm also, I guess, have the follow-up question of, in what way are you planning to or will be working with the instructional audit? Because something that's, they were great presentations and people were passionate, but, there's no but, that's great, thank you. We didn't hear from a core subject teacher that I can recall, and we have reading gaps. And so like, I'm curious, like, what are we doing? Teacher modeling, did I miss one? I'm sorry if I missed one. I'm sorry, we didn't get to ask a lot of questions, but we didn't, like, teacher modeling, do new teachers have observation? What level? How are we tying this to research-backed methods that keep instructional quality high? There seem to be a lot of option out, I'm making up words, I was going to say optionality, options as to what, who engages in what services and when. It didn't seem to be targeted to maybe where we need it most versus, you know, where we have an emphasis in our strategic plan and need it most. And some of that, I imagine, is tied to some of these principles about buy-in and all of those, but also it just, it was missing for me, given that we know that we are struggling with really concerning outcomes for a lot of our students, and I just, I'm not saying it's not fair, I just didn't see it really today.
Yeah, and that's something I can give you. The 73 Opportunities Courses that we, you know, that we offered this year do speak to those things. We offered several opportunities for Science of Reading, we offered several opportunities on differentiating instruction, we offered.
And I don't want to, let me say, I'm not trying to downplay the teachers we did here for me. It's not that, I just like, for instructional coaches, I want to make sure that new reading teachers have, are beyond the first year, are reading teachers that we know based on their scores are struggling or not having outcomes that we want, are getting assigned instructional coaches that are working with them, and they're having teachers observe their teaching and give them feedback so that they can benefit, or something like that. I'm just making that up, but I'm, that's not what I've really heard. What I heard was sort of, if a teacher wants to engage, we let them engage, which maybe that's what you have to do, because otherwise, the teachers don't, you know, it's already a hard enough profession, I'm not trying to make it more terrible. And I got observed every week as a teacher, and I hated it, I'm not going to lie, because it's really stressful. But I don't know, I just, you know, that's all.
We can certainly do that.
So with the instructional audit then, because I'm thinking they're the professionals, I'm admitting I'm not the professional, they will hopefully look at what our practices are, I imagine? Is that part of their audit, bellwether, and let us know, like, here is something that you need, you know, like you should be doing if you really want to move the needle on where your kid's outcomes are? Is that?
That's my understanding, is that they're going to make recommendations, they're going to identify themes that they feel like are kind of at the root cause of why we're experiencing, the current results we're experiencing, and make recommendations for next steps.
I hope everyone can take that with a grain of salt. I know y'all are doing hard work, it's just hard questions to ask.
I mean, my reflection, I think you're heading in the right direction, honestly, is that there's a lot of wishful thinking around how we engage teachers and other professionals in the system with their goal development and our performance appraisal. I think that when we collect the data around that, we will find that we have a lot of, I call them, it's a scale of one to five, so there's a lot of gentlemen threes all the way. Probably the majority of the scores in the system are threes and fours, they're in the mid-range. I think that, part of that's because we're asking one principal and one principal and assistant principal to be supervisors for way too many people, but that's the model that we have. But having said that, I would say we need to do a lot better job on assessing the quality of the goals that the teachers set. At the central office level, we need to be pulling and auditing, talk about auditing, we need to be pulling and auditing the goal setting that goes on, so we can see what are the goals that teachers are setting and that principals are signing off on. Dr. Kaiser and I have talked about this summer, we're going to audit the evaluations at the schools, so that we can see what kind of scores people are receiving, and then go back and look at the actual results those, the teachers had with the students with their assessments. Because a big incentive for someone to use professional development and use a coach is cognitive dissonance between me thinking I'm doing a great job, and what are my results, and someone else saying to me, that's not acceptable, you have to do better. That's a sudden incentive for me to say, hey, I better figure this out, I better work, I better go to that professional development session. So I don't think you should apologize for pointing out something that is a big disconnect between, we do evaluation, we do professional development. The two things go together. There should be a feedback loop between where someone stands with their results, they should know what their results are in front of their face, and then they should be given opportunities to improve their skills so that they can get better results. But we don't have that right now. When it comes to seeking out professional development opportunities and really embracing them, it tends to be teachers that are already, you know, really enthusiastic about it and want to do the PD. So we need to figure out, how do we cause that? How do we catalyze a desire for professional development? The other piece that I didn't hear was doing a professional development needs assessment by actually surveying all the teachers in the school system and asking them, along the continuum of the teacher performance appraisal, where are your strengths, where are your weaknesses, so that we can then try to match up professional development to what you're saying we need as a school system. I think the last one we probably did might have been seven or eight years ago that I can remember. So thank you for the good questions you're asking, because it's stirring up stuff that I've been not only talking a lot about with my staff, but really reinforcing the fact that there is a big, there is a disconnect. I don't know how big it is, but we have 1,400 teachers, and probably half to two-thirds of them, which is probably the success rate of our kids, right? About two-thirds of them, are really engaging with this. So we need to do better. We need to get, we're providing, I'd say Almont County probably has one of the top not, you know, one of the most potentially impactful professional development programs in the state, particularly because we're sitting right here with UVA and all these other resources. So it really is a shame if someone goes an entire year and dodges Making Connections, doesn't work with an instructional coach, doesn't attend PD, and waits until, now it's 10 years, to start racking up their points at the last minute to get recertified. And we need to, we need, we need to get more urgent about it. So thank you.
Matt, are you going to also look at differences between the schools in terms of how the teachers are rated by the principals?
So what we're going to do is collect all the data together and then sort it out by.
See if there's any easy A's?
Yeah. Well, I mean, and I'm, believe me, having been a principal of a school with 160 teachers and four administrators, five administrators, I mean, it's a bear, but it can be done if you keep it simple. And the ratings that teachers receive really need to reflect to a greater extent how successful they are. That's a prompt, right? You know, connecting me between, you know, how, what are my results, and what do I need to do to get better? Because no one wants, no one goes into teaching thinking, I'm just going to get bad results. But the issue is, is that many, many of our professionals that we have, if they don't have an SOL test, they work kind of in a results-free environment. And then if they are, if they do have those assessments, then, you know, we need to put in front of them what their scores were, because they often don't come out, you know, until after all, the teachers are gone.
And then we need, if we need more resources or different kinds of resources, we need to work together, obviously.
And my question is sort of related to that, too. Those teachers who need remedial work, how are they determined, and at what point in the school year do we sort of realize that somebody does need work?
There's the, there's, there's what, you know, kind of what the ideal is, which the way it should work is that if we're doing common assessments across the division, and there's, there are assessments in every subject area, and the principals are conducting their learning walks, which right now, they are required to do 10 every week. That's something we started this last semester, because we had goals around getting the principals out in the, in the classrooms to a greater extent this fall. They far surpassed previous years, but there were still principals kind of hiding under the curve of everybody else doing them, so we, right now, we just, every week, 10. And if they don't have it, then Jay or Michelle reaches out to them to find out why. So the first step is the principal being present throughout the building, in the classroom, and they all have time to do it, trust me. And they'll have more time to do it if they get out and do it, because the kids won't misbehave as much, because the principal will be out there. That's the first step. You know, you're observing, you're seeing how things are going in the classroom, you are looking for results, you're having conversations, you do those meetings. Early in the school year, you should be able to identify teachers that are struggling. And then the way we do it is that we do something called a Performance Improvement Plan, and you identify one of the standard, one of the areas, one of the standards, and then you work with the teachers to develop action steps that they're going to take to improve it, and then they need frequent monitoring. And I don't, I mean, that's the ideal situation. I think that we need to do a better job, again, of actually doing it more. I mean, as you're pointing out, we have schools that are struggling with accreditation, we have achievement gaps in every area. Why is it that we have all these teachers receiving high ratings? It doesn't add up. So, you know, and again, I'm not bashing teachers at all, I'm really not, because I know it's an uphill battle, but there, around the state, there are teachers that are having more success with students than our teachers are, lots of our teachers, and their scores probably deserve to be higher. and their, their scores probably deserve to be higher. But, you know, there's a disconnect between scores for the teacher performance appraisal or the educator performance appraisal, and then the results that we're getting. So Claire and I are going to take a deep dive this summer, and, you know, if I'm looking at a teacher that's got a four or five on their evaluation, but they, they, not a single student of color in their class passed their reading assessment, then I'm, I'm going to pick up the phone and call the principal and ask them how this happened. We just have to get down in that space with the administrators and having those conversations, because a lot of their job really is supervision, and, and we need to emphasize that. And it hasn't been pleasant this year, getting them, you know, get out and do those 10 walks, but then we get emails from them saying, wow, now that I'm getting out and doing 10 walks, I can really identify teachers that need extra help. I'm like, yeah, that's right, that's the goal. You know? So they, they start to connect the dots on that. And by the way, if they don't get in those 10 a week, their evaluations are going to be lower. I've told all of them that, that if they don't average 10 a week, they don't, they will not have a proficient score for instructional leadership. Because the main thing of instructional leadership is being out, walking around in the classrooms. So accountability rolls downhill. Sorry, Megan, I went off on.
Fine.
Went off on a recording. But again, Ms. Carlson, you're on the right track. I agree, you're, I'm on the same page with you.
Okay, good. Always like to hear that. Does anyone have any other comments?
Just, I thought this was an extraordinarily useful and well-put-together.
Yeah.
Working session.
It was.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, I was going to add, sorry, I was letting everyone, I was going to add one positive since I had, well, just one positive, the LTI instructors, I thought gave a great, well, I'm going to, gave a great presentation, but I really liked the examples they had there of how they had done the, the projects, and then I really liked the whole, I don't know, I was, so when I first started the presentation, I was thinking it was the one thing I'd actually written down in that very first slide about, think of professional development, you've liked and not liked, one of the ones I never, that I really didn't like that stood out to me was how to use a smart board, I had to do a whole professional development, and I'm like, it's not that, it wasn't that hard to use a smart board. But then I was quickly, you guys explained that you do so much beyond that, you're really helping teachers plan, how to, and you're helping make differentiation to your learners, more easy for teachers, you're modeling teaching, the lessons, then watching them teach, I believe Ms. Shan, y'all pointed out how she modeled it, then, then watched it, and I just was seeing a lot of, hearing a lot of good things there, so thank you. Just wanted to shout that out. The whole thing was wonderful, thank you for all the effort I know went into this, because there were a lot of slides, there were a lot of people, there were a lot of people from different backgrounds, and it's late, and you're all here on a Thursday, so thank you so much, we appreciate it, it makes us a better board, and then hopefully makes us a better division, and we're thankful.
Thank you.
So, that concludes the professional development work session. We're moving on to other business. Does anybody have any other business? Well, with that, we are going to adjourn, and we're early, 10 minutes.